Okay. All right, we'll go ahead. Let's stand for the pledge of allegiance, please.
Okay. Mayor, if we can do roll call?
Yep, go ahead and do roll call, thank you.
Chair McKay.
Here.
Vice Chair Jablonsky.
Here.
Board Member Fisickelli. Board Member Hartman. Board Member Schroeder.
Schroeder's here. She did.
All right.
Mayor, the first item is simply to approve the minutes of June 28, 2018.
Okay.
So if there's a motion for that, for the approval of the minutes?
I'll make a motion, even though I wasn't there.
I'll second it. Call the question.
Councilmember Hartman? I'm sorry, Board Member Hartman? Board Member Schroeder?
Yes.
Board Member Fisickelli?
Yes.
Board Vice Chair Jablonsky?
Yes.
Chair McKay?
Yes. Okay. Reports of committee.
That'd be Lee, is there any reports from officers or committee reports at this time?
The mayor council. I want to introduce to everybody the new...
Yeah, it's on. You just need to turn it up a little more, I guess.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
I'd like to introduce the new Assistant Fire Chief. Let me give you a little history, background on Bob. Bob did 23 years as a firefighter with Pembroke Park. And he worked in a capacity through the ranks, all the way up to Assistant Chief and Acting Chief. Then when BSO took over in 2002, Bob came over as a captain with us. Bob also with the Broward Sheriff's Office was in our Training Division for a while. And his last duty assignment was in Weston, which he retired two years ago. Bob been a strong advocate. He's been our Training Chief now for over a year with Southwest Ranches. He's been a strong advocate for our department and for the community. He's known probably just about every new person we get, Bob trained them at the Fire Academy. He's an instructor over there for over 13 years. But with that due, I'll turn it over to Bob.
Thank you, good evening. Basically, I started...
Talk, talk, boy, into the mic, they can't hear.
Basically, I started my career as a volunteer for the town of Pembroke Park. I've got, right now, over 40 years' experience as a firefighter, paramedic. I did hold every position at Pembroke Park, all the way up to the Acting Fire Chief, three times. And when the sheriff, when we merged with, actually with Broward County, came over as a captain and was in the Training Division, and then ended up in Weston where I finished my career. I worked in Southwest Ranches a lot, ran a lot of calls in Southwest Ranches. I was at Station 55 for a while. So I'm familiar with the town. We have a great group of young men and women that are dedicated. And we're trying to move forward, doing the best we can. And I can answer any questions that you may have.
Bob, I don't have any, but I just want to say that I've been out there in a few training missions and met and spoke and visited with you and chit-chatted, and it was a pleasure. And you apparently know your stuff, so it's great to have you on board.
Thank you. I'm committed to helping the men and women of Southwest Ranches. I don't know anything else. I've been a firefighter my whole adult life, so this is all I know. So, I mean, I'm not to run calls anymore. I run all the calls, and I'm here to try to help these new people learn and give them more tools in their toolbox so they can do a job and make our department as professional as any professional department around. And we're well on the way. Really would invite all of you to come out to a training session one night. The next month or so, we're going to be out at the Fire Academy doing some live fire training. So we'd invite all of you to come out and...
Let me know, I'll come out. You guys still meeting behind Lowe's also, or no?
Yes, sir. And then the Academy's closed until July. So after July, we'll try to, we're going to schedule two nights out there to do, simulate car fires. It should be, should be good. And I think you'll see how professional your firefighters are.
Anybody else have any other questions for?
Welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Welcome aboard, thank you. Yep, we got a vote on it, so.
Mayor, in fact, if the board chooses Item 7C's appointment of your Assistant Chief, so if you want to take it out of turn...
Sure, why not? I'll make the motion.
I'll second. Call the question, if you would.
Chair Schroeder?
Yes.
Board Member Fisickelli?
Yes.
Chair Jablonsky?
Yes.
Chair McKay?
Yes.
They're all board members, the only chair isn't there.
Sorry.
It's okay.
Thought you got a raise.
All right.
Are you going to ask for one?
The old and unfinished business was next on the agenda. Was there any?
I don't know of any. You got any newer old business that you want to address?
Yeah, I'd like, I have some new business.
The new business is Item 7, so if we skip down to 7, under the agenda, A is approval of fiscal year 2018, sorry, 1920 Volunteer Fire Fund, a blended component unit of the town Southwest Ranches, and Public Safety Fire Operational Budget. I assume Marty wants to do that.
Yes, thank you, Counselor. Good evening, Board Members. Mr. Secretary, and at the podium now is our President. The selection of our Vice President and Treasurer just occurred. Congratulations, Bob, welcome aboard. Tonight, we have our annual special meeting. This covers our Fund 102. Can you hear me? Okay. Fund 102, in regards to the Volunteer Fire Services Component. Individually, you will see the budget is in line with the prior year, as recommended to you tonight, of $202,506. And to get a better perspective of the total Public Safety Fire for the town in grand total, we always provide to you every year, the colored Page 9 of 28. If you turn that sideways, that'll give you a projection of the Volunteer Fire Component, which is highlighted in yellow. You will see an actual decrease from year to year. Now, the decrease being for fiscal year 2020 is going to go from $368,469 down to $354,150. That represents a decrease of $14,319. So with that in mind, you, as for tonight, we only cover the $202,506 that is reported through the Volunteer Fire Fund, Fund 102. And the difference, which is your $154,000, that gets reported as a separate department within the General Fund. There's no change in overall stipends for next year as recommended. There are individual program mods, as well as contingency reserves for fire apparatus. But we cover all that during the regular budget process. And we had the opportunity to also to present it to you individually. So this will also be covered during the budget hearing phases. And we could take direct questions for that as well. So if anyone has any questions in regards to the expenditures, the revenues, I'm opening it to the floor right now.
See no questions, Marty.
Okay, with that, Mr. Secretary, I would like to receive a, oh, the other comment, very important. This entire budget has gone through your Fire Advisory Board and has been approved in its entirety with no exceptions. I need a motion to approve the budget as presented, please.
I was going to ask if you wanted a motion, I'm so moved.
Second.
Board Member Schroeder?
Yes.
Board Member Fisickelli?
Yes.
Vice Chair Fisickelli? I'm sorry, Vice Chair...
Jablonsky.
Jablonsky?
Yes.
Chair McKay?
Yes.
Next, Item B is approval of fiscal year 2018, calendar year 2017, IRS Form Number 990, Return of Organization Exempt and from Income Tax. Marty, I expect you as well.
Thank you, we also have attachment, you will see. That represents 501(c)(4) tax exempt status. Along with that, that has an annual filing requirement. It mirrors our CAFER, except for one item, depreciation, which is permitted for IRS guidelines. But this is a requirement that would be brought to you, Council, every year to get your ratification as filed and executed, you will see, by Secretary McKay back in February 2019. Thank you.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Board Fisickelli?
Yes.
Board Member Fisickelli?
Yes.
Board Member Schroeder?
Yes.
Vice Chair Jablonsky?
Yes.
Chair McKay?
Yes.
Okay, Item C, Board Chair is done, so we're now to D. Appointment of Volunteer Captain Darren Brock to Volunteer Station Captain. I assume Chief Bennett will make the presentation.
Yeah, I would like approval from the board to reallocate from the Assistant Chief $2,000 to a Station Captain position. To compensate that individual, it's helping with our command staff and to compensate that person for all the off-duty stuff that they do. So there's no increase, we just want to...
You're just shifting money from one place to another.
Right, just want to reallocate the money.
There's no additional fund, okay. No, no, just...
Well, excuse me, at first, we got to cover the appointment, and then we covered the discussion on the stipends.
Marty, we've covered the appointment already, that was moved on early in the meeting.
No, no, Russell, this was the appointment of Captain Brock to, oh, sorry, to make him Volunteer Station Captain at an increase in pay of $2,000. And that $2,000 comes from the Assistant Chief Position. So you're reallocating $2,000 left for the Assistant Chief Position in order to have a Volunteer Station Captain.
That's correct.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Board Member Fisickelli?
Yes.
Board Member Hartman?
Yes.
Board Member Fisickelli?
Yes.
Board Member Schroeder?
Yes.
Vice Chair Jablonsky?
Yes.
Chair McKay?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Moving on to Item E, we've covered part of that. But we need to document for the record, the amount of stipends that are paid for all the volunteers, in accordance with the budget. With that in mind, for the Volunteer Fire Chief, it's $18,000. The Station Captain would be $2,000. The Assistant Volunteer Fire Chief will be $10,000. The firefighters would be $100 per shift. The driver engineers are $125 per shift. And in order not to penalize the Station Captain, that if the Station Captain also serves as a shift detail, he would be also eligible for a payment of a shift during the period of service.
So is there any increase?
No, there'll be no budget impact at all in the allocation. That has been in place for, I believe, three years now? Three years? Second year, the way it is. $30,000 chief, and the $88,000...
Motion to approve?
$118,000, excuse me, $625 for both driver engineers and firefighters, three shifts every day. Three in plate every day.
Thank you.
Board Member Hartman?
Yes.
Board Member Fisickelli?
Yes.
Board Member Schroeder?
Yes.
Vice Chair Jablonsky?
Yes.
Chair McKay?
Yes.
Any other things to discuss from the Volunteer Fire Department's standpoint? No news is good news.
You know, the other thing, just one thing I wanted to say. Since Chief Shadala came on with us, and being he's been at the Fire Academy for 13 years plus, we've got a lot of training out there, which we never had before. And he's comped, got a lot of it comped for us, so I just want to thank you for that. Other than that, everything's running real smooth and good. Everything, the station's up and running. We're, I hear that the fences might be up next week. I know they've been out there running all the camera wire. So we're about completed. We're getting pretty close to completion, so everything's going pretty smooth.
Okay.
Motion to adjourn?
All right, thank you.
Okay.
Seven, third, fourth, we're done.
We have four minutes, Mayor, until the next meeting.
Okay. Too much fun.
Hey, Steve, how you doing? Good, how you doing? Oh. Yeah, yeah, yeah. He's a good kid. No, they're, they're still good, they're still good, yeah. Zacco's about... Not getting rich, but it's, it's neat, yeah, yeah. Well, I keep six heifers, big heifers. And then usually, most of them are carrying a calf, just then I can't have the one bull. So that's all I have. It depends, you know, what happens. I have a lot of people that are waiting for me, like I say. They looking for that exemption. I got more, more rental cows.
We own the property.
Yeah, you know, but it works out, you know, it's... We've been just taking hours to market. A lot of times, we have people that wants them or something like that, you know, by other means. We just taking them market and leaving whatever, whatever we get for, we get. Okatomi.
He says, I made up my property.
It works out.
He said, no one asked back then. He said, it wasn't like it is today. He said, you put your fence wherever the hell you wanted it.
It's nothing to do anywhere. We keep, it's not a lot of...
He said, it was like, he said, it was dirt.
We get bread for nothing.
He said, that they just drove across, and then all of a sudden, Broward County came in one day with a rock machine, and they laid a rock there. He said, it wasn't paved, no, long, long after.
Yeah, we get one type of feed.
Yeah.
It's really pretty good feed, it's, they grade feed by protein.
See, that's the problem. No one knows where that 50 feet is.
And most of it we get is at least seven...
No, because it's an amorphous 50 feet. Broward County just said, here's a box, and there's 50 feet right of way here. So no one knows, it's a tough... Oh, no, legally, we're 100% right.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Because of the fact they haven't paid taxes on the property.
They make out, yeah.
So we won the case, the case was on, we won.
Actually, like, in my situation, my next door neighbor, he doesn't feed at all.
We'll be good people, we're one with life.
And you can't tell the difference in the two cows. There's so much grass.
That's addressed themselves.
They get a lot of proteins out of the grass.
2035, that's a cut down. Or if 50% of the barn is damaged, then it has to be torn down.
But, yeah, it works out good.
Get to the real story here.
It's reported in the public records. Everyone sees this. And you can run around town telling everyone we won. We won. There's no doubt, we won. This case is over, we won.
We get the feed for nothing, and the bread for nothing, so we're really going to spoil...
I know, but you know what I'm saying, move on. There's enough chicken, we don't have to deal with that, that's my thought.
One acre?
That's yours. All right, everyone good? Katie good, everyone good?
One or two would be the most.
Sammy, Katie good? You tell Sammy to get rid of her husband yet, or boyfriend?
Wow.
That's crazy. What does FACC stand for?
We could probably run three or four cows per acre.
Association of, one second, Gary. How as a town clerk can you apply for that?
Yeah, that's, that's a secret.
Yeah, but he's a town clerk, not a city clerk.
And then, like I said... Our cows are used to this.
There's no friggin' sense of humor, I feel like, oh my God. All right, Mayor, it's 7 o'clock. Yeah, let's go. It's almost 7 o'clock in here.
All right, if we can get everybody to get their seats, so we get our meeting started.
Where's mine? Geavel?
Or GGO? Your paperwork.
How you doing, Vinnie? Yeah, how are you doing? You look good. Ruth, how you doing? Did you get a car back? Totaled it, did you get a new one?
No, but he said, did you get a new car?
Did you get a new car? You did, good. Except for it doesn't have the fish smell. It's not wet.
And we're glad you could swim.
Good.
All right, you ready? Okay.
I am.
All right. If we could bring this meeting to order, and please, roll call, please.
Mayor McKay?
Here.
Vice Mayor Jablonsky?
Here.
Councilmember Fisickelli?
Here.
Councilmember Hartman?
Here.
Councilmember Schroeder?
Here.
If we could please stand for the pledge of allegiance?
A bit coming, you have any cards? Yeah, sorry, Mayor, I'm opening up the agenda. Mayor, tonight, we have three speakers. Anyone else want to speak? We got to turn it in now, under the rules. Anyone else? Okay, we have three speakers in this order. We have Russell Becker, sorry if I'm a special, if I'm spicer, sorry, it's hard to read. David Kozinski and David Dodge, in that order. So Russell, you're first.
Hello?
You can pull that down to you, but yeah, you got to speak into it.
Can you hear me?
Yeah, we got to turn it up a little.
My name is Russell Spicer. My address is 7825 Beach Fair and Circle in Tamarack, Florida, 33321. And I'm coming to ask permission to use the preserve that's at Dykes and Griffin. I want to do an intensive rotational grazing experiment with cattle and chickens. And I'm coming to ask permission and see what the process is for me to apply for that.
Legally, that's something you'll have to deal with Assistant Town Administrator or the Town Administrator on. So thank you for presenting this to the town. It seems like a very interesting town issue. So Russell will give you his card, and if you could call him tomorrow morning and set up an appointment to come meet with him.
Will do.
And next speaker is David Kozinski.
David Kozinski, 6411 Holletee Trail, hello. Speaking on behalf of Sunshine Ranches Homeowners Association. We had our meeting yesterday evening, and last year in June, I think we had maybe 10 people attend our meeting. So Judy Parker came up with an idea, let's have it at a different location. And we decided to hold it over at the Wonder Bar, which actually turned out quite well. We had over 25 members show up. We picked up three new members last night. And we got some of our little funding things that we've been trying to get through past. Got reimbursements for some of the memorials for the people that have recently passed away. But that's basically it, thank you.
Thank you. Final speaker, David Dodge.
Good evening, Mayor, Town Council Members. My name is David Dodge. I'm here to speak on behalf of Barbara Berry, owner of property located at 6453 Southwest 185th.
Could you speak up just a little bit more, we can hardly hear you.
Southwest 185th Way. Barbara's unable to be here this evening due to health issues. I'm speaking about a code violation that has been brought into compliance. Issue is in the amount of fine that was issued by Special Magistrate and City Attorney Polikoff, offer of $28,875. This is an exorbitant amount, I'm sorry, exorbitant amount of money for clearing, improving, and protecting property from hazardous sinkholes. I'm sorry, exorbitant amount of money for clearing, improving, and protecting property from hazardous sinkholes. I've been in constant communication with the town staff during the entire process, and it is my belief that the outcome is very unjust and unethical as due to the process. Prior to any work commencing on the project, town staff gave verbal permission and written emails to begin category one work, which was for ground erosion root ball replenishment as to what was required. However, the estimated amount of fill that was brought onto the property exceeded what was expected. Four sinkholes were on the property and continued to worsen as we continued to evaluate the property. And as a result, additional fill was brought in to remedy the situation. This citation for excess fill was cited to the incorrect parcel legal description that did not have the excess fill on it. Even though I was asked to remove the fill and it took longer than expected due to Barbara's medical hardship and town instructions that kept changing, the property is now in compliance. Enforcement of code should be about bringing violations into compliance and not the primary goal of raising money for the town. I have copies of all the communications between the town and myself during the entire process. Personal hardships should be given consideration. The property has a much greater value with these improvements. It takes time to find someone to remove this fill, find a location for it to legally be disposed of. I'm asking that the findings of the code office and special magistrate to vacate due to so many irregularities and conflicting directions, either verbally or in, and/or in emails. I thank you for this, for your time to be here this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Keith? We have one more speaker, uh, actually, Mayor Vince.
Let me address it.
No, there's no reason.
Okay.
Uh, uh, Mary Gay, can you bring Vince the microphone, if you don't mind? If you could bring Vinnie the microphone, just to help him out.
Whatever it takes.
Oh.
Am I up?
You're up. You can sit, Vinnie.
You can sit right there.
Just sit.
I'd rather stand.
Give me the mic.
That's right, Gay. Good evening, mayor, council members, and illustrious audience. I'm here because in the past several weeks, I have noticed trucks upon trucks bringing fill in, in different areas of our town. Specifically Sunshine Ranches. And my problem is, there is no dock boards at the entrance to where they're delivering the material. And I think that's an engineering function. If you are going to give them a permit, I don't even know if they have permits. If you're going to give them a permit, make sure that they have a dock board outside their residence. Because you don't know if the facility has a permit or not. So I'm addressing it to the council rather than go to engineering because I think engineering is missing its duties. I thank you, and you have a good night.
Thank you, Vince.
Mayor, the next item on the agenda is board reports.
All right. Any board reports?
Mayor, council. Um, just a real quick one that, uh, we are, uh, working on the ordinance related to nurseries and, um, landscape companies. However, um, we did significantly change it, and so it's with legal and legal is reviewing it.
Yeah, and thank you for bringing that out. I want, I need time with you.
And our town attorney needs time with the board chairman, so we...
Yes, because I, I...
So, so we're working on it and we hope to have it at, for our next meeting.
I just, if you could please call me, because some of it's a little nonsensical and I have to...
None of it is nonsensical.
Well, meaning in terms...
However, it may need some adjustment.
Yeah, meaning we have to make sure we convey what you guys are requesting.
Absolutely, thank you.
And that's why I just want to meet with you.
I'll do that, perfect. Thank you.
I'll have to bring her the mic soon.
Okay, the, um, parks board, uh, had a meeting and we were able to dodge the raindrops out there. And we went to the, uh, one that's on Flamingo. It's a very small park on Flamingo and Griffin.
Trailside.
Trailside Park, correct. And it's in pretty good shape. Um, we have a few things we'd like to touch up in the building, and, um, that's about it. And clean up some of the trash now that the water table's down. Uh, people have a, we need a garbage can there. We have it, we just haven't put it there yet. But people throw their bottles into the pond and then, now that the table is down, we can get at the bottles. So I picked up some and we're hoping to get some volunteers before the table comes up. Uh, then we went to, um, before it rained really bad and we had to leave, uh, Calusa Corners. And, um, after much discussion of taking down the fence, we decided to leave the fence up and remove a section of it that's damaged until we can afford to fix the whole fence. If we remove the whole fence, we're asking for trouble. People will be riding their vehicles all over it. They have not done that to this point, so we'd like to make sure they don't. And the park itself is open and there's use of it. Uh, people are there a lot. Um, the drainage area is really good. We have one water retention spot that's near Dykes Road that we're gonna have to address. Um, but, um, Kevin from, um, South Broward Drainage said that he was gonna work on that. So other than that, we didn't make it to any other park because the rains came. So as soon as we can get to the rest, the whole point is to take a hard look at each park and see what we think we need to do in order to upgrade it. The other thing is, when I came here, um, at the last meeting, I had asked for permission to do cleanup with volunteers. And you all said if it didn't cost you was fine, and I had talked about even working on the ponds. And we have enough professionals with equipment in this town that have volunteered to step up to the plate. And that's what we're doing. And the idea is to try to get these parks cleaned up and in a better condition that the public can use them and that it doesn't cost the town any money. So I'm working on it and hopefully, uh, next meeting, I can give you an up-to-date report. Thank you.
Thank you. Any just some board reports? Seeing none, all right. Yep, who would like to go first? Well?
Go ahead, Gary.
I'm up, thank you. Thank you, everybody, for coming. Um, got a few things just want to mention, uh, going on. Uh, more of, uh, town information, but also, uh, something I'd like to talk about briefly. Um, I hope everybody has a, uh, healthy and a happy, uh, Fourth of July. Town hall's gonna be closed. Um, but the big thing I want to talk about that is, and I'm sure most of you have noticed, a very large sign on I-75, um, talking about fireworks and our animals. And basically, uh, you know, we're, we're scaring all our horses, we're scaring the cattle, the ducks, the, the dogs are going crazy. I know in our neighborhood, uh, so many fireworks are going off that it's, uh, sometimes it's just like a, a gunpowder cloud that comes through the area. And I'd really, really ask everybody to refrain from doing that, gunshots, things of that nature. Um, it, it's, it just really takes its toll on, on our, our pets and our, you know, our livestock and, and our horses and stuff like that. And so I, I really want to throw that out there, that it's really up to all of us to, uh, kind of enforce that. And, uh, you know, you, you, you can always, you can always tell when it's just about midnight, you know? And it's, unfortunately, there's a lot of dogs and cats and critters running for cover, you know? So I would, I would ask everybody to, uh, please observe that, that, uh, fireworks are illegal. The kind that go boom are illegal in the state of Florida. Um, just want to mention also that there's hazmat in the park on the thirteenth of, uh, July from, uh, eight to two. Uh, we have shredding also there, uh, provided by the town. And we also have, uh, by, uh, provided by Davy Police Department, uh, drug prescription drop-off of any unused medicines that you don't know how to, you don't know how to dispose of, they'll dispose of it. No questions asked, uh, for you. Um, just want to make, uh, mention for everybody, uh, out there in TV land that the, um, budget season is starting. Uh, next month, we set the, uh, millage rate in the July meeting. So, uh, everybody should, uh, be paying attention to that or watching for that. Uh, we have Broward County, uh, uh, property appraiser on the fifteenth from ten to two. And we have the Flomobile the twenty-fifth and in August, the twenty-second. We're already talking about August, so, uh, come here at town hall. Uh, it's, uh, it's a worthwhile trip if you can make it. We also have a photo contest going on. Uh, the due date on that is the fifteenth. We have the flyers in the back and it's available on the website. Right, Sandy? Thank you. The information's available on the website. And, uh, last, uh, we have Bingo in the Barn coming up on the twenty-fourth. Everybody has a lot of fun on that and, uh, you know, it supports a worthwhile cause. So I urge everybody to, uh, get your tickets early so that we can get head counts and, and get everybody squared away on that. And we all have a lot of fun. It's in, in August at, I believe it's at six PM. So, I want to mention that. Um, and that's all I've got for right now, there.
Who'd like to go next? Bob?
Just a couple of quick comments. Um, number one, and Gary, I was hoping you wouldn't bring this up, so I had something to say. How close? Is that good? Yeah. Thank you. Wouldn't want you to miss a word, Vince, thanks. You didn't announce that Russell is a superlative in the state, did you?
Oh, I'm gonna do that.
You're gonna do it?
Yeah.
I'm not gonna have anything else? Uh, I didn't get the memo. Yeah, no, yeah, from our attorney. So, all right, I won't, uh, steal Keith's thunder. Um, I hope everybody had a great Father's Day and happy Fourth of July and there's, uh, uh... I'm tongue-tied. All right, Keith, good luck with it. Thank you.
Dee?
Um, I'd like to touch on the Fourth of July. I hope everybody has a great one. I'm gonna search high and low, but I'm gonna find fireworks and I'm gonna watch them 'cause they go boom and you go, ooh, and, uh, and I love the colors. Uh, back in nineteen forty-one, the state of Florida passed a law. Does anybody know what that law is? It's a quiz. No fireworks. I believe it was in nineteen forty-one, Keith. What do you think?
Vinnie?
You have to have a special license. So if in the future, I mean, it's a little bit late now, but for in the future, if this is something that, uh, really bothers you all, I mean, I've got horses that are, they're bomb-proof. It doesn't matter what's around them, they, they just don't care. As long as they got food to eat, they're happy. But, uh, you can direct your, your police force or whatever to go after these people. They're some of the hardest people to catch. Because once it goes off, it's not there anymore. It's just gone. That's what I was told. Once it explodes, it's gone. The little snakes they sell and the sparklers are legal, but real fireworks are, are not legal. So it's something you might all want to think about. That law was passed in nineteen forty-one. And that's it.
Freddie, anything? You good? All right, well, I wish everybody has a happy, healthy Fourth of July. Stay safe. Don't lose any of your fingers if you're playing with fireworks and, uh, keep your head down. So, uh, I'm good.
Thank you, mayor, and commission. I'm next. And, and the reason why council member Hartman is, uh, Andy wanted to be able to actually do this. Um, so he emailed it to me and asked me to, uh, say a couple of brief words, uh, which I will. Um, for those of you who know, in, uh, in the state of Florida, we have four hundred and twelve cities. Uh, that's how many cities there are in municipalities, we call ourselves town. Four hundred and twelve municipalities in, in the state of Florida. Sixty-seven counties in the state of Florida. So when you do the quick math, you have four hundred and seventy-nine governmental entities in the state of Florida, which also means you have four hundred and seventy-nine clerks. You also have four hundred and seventy-nine assistant clerks. So that means together, we have nine hundred and fifty-eight clerks in the state of Florida. Out of nine hundred and fifty-eight clerks, Russell was named the Clerk of the Year in the state of Florida. So the way I understand this, and Yvette can tell me if I'm wrong, that Yvette nominated Russell?
Yes.
And did so in secret. Uh, I actually heard through the grapevine that he was nominated. And, um, Andy wrote a wonderful letter, a portion of which he wants me to read onto the record, uh, nominate Russell. Russell had no idea he was nominated. None. In fact, Russell was advocating for two other clerks to be considered for Clerk of the Year. Okay? Had no idea that he was the front-runner. You know, he was advocating for others. So I just want to read the two paragraphs of what Andy said was the finest letter he's ever drafted. He wanted me to make sure he said that. But he wanted, uh, me to read two paragraphs from his letter. And that is, "Russell is a very important and well-respected member of our team. I have had numerous opportunities to observe his contributions and interactions with the public, the mayor and council, and with town staff. I always, I have always found him to be a consummate professional. He is tireless and cares deeply about his coworkers. He listens to all sides of issues and makes solid suggestions. He is a very good problem solver, but he will lead staff through the ins and outs of difficult situations. He allows them to own the situation and to resolve the issue. No matter what challenges come his way, he always responds in a positive way. His sense of humor is legendary and always shines through the darkest of challenges. Because of these qualities, he is respected as the leader he is." So that was part of a very nice letter that Andy wrote. So, uh, we went in your office and stole it so the general public could see it. Russell was presented with the Clerk of the Year, uh, of the state of Florida. And Russell, uh, Andy said, "You cannot get out of here without a, a photograph of you with the commission holding your, uh, nice award that I've been careful not to drop the whole night."
Thank you, Keith, and I'll have to thank Andy when he returns, obviously, for the nomination, the support. And I want to thank the town council for their support. Um, I don't know that I'm the best clerk this year for, for the state of Florida, but I certainly had the best PR campaign team, so I appreciate that. Thank you.
If you could take a photo, Russell.
Yeah, you want to do that down front or up there?
I don't care. Down front.
Good job, Keith.
Well, sorry, Bob.
Oh, he emailed it to me. Keith, you too. Oh, it's your time to shine. I'll get the attorney of the year soon enough.
Come on. Come on.
Wait for it.
Congratulations.
One minute.
I want a picture of Keith kissing them too.
Hold on Keith's coming. There we go.
That's awesome.
Congratulations.
Alright, uh, Mayor, just to continue in, in other, uh, good news. Um, the town of Southwest Ranches survived the governor's veto. So we thank Governor DeSantis and it has funded approximately a little bit more than six hundred thousand of the town's projects for next year, including some much-needed guardrails. So, we're thrilled by that. Also thrilled that legal council budget is once again covered by the state of Florida. So, uh, I thank the governor's office for that. So we did pretty good this year. Next year, we are going to continue to fight, uh, for two main things. And that is both the annexation language that we've discussed so many times, as well as our public safety building. So, that are our highlights for next year. Emily has done a phenomenal job working with legislative staff and, uh, my old law partner Nelson Diaz has done a great job in Tallahassee for us, so. Next, um, gonna go on to, uh, more, uh, town legal issues. We'll look at litigation. Okay? Um, some of you may have heard the name McBride or may know a property on Palomino, uh, that they own. Um, those of you who know the, the full story, know that a fence was, uh, removed as a result of one of the hurricanes. And a fence started going back up without permits. As a result of that, the town cited the property owner, um, under code enforcement. It said you had to put the fence, you needed permits to build the fence. When they came in with their survey for their fence, it was, uh, determined that they were trying to put the fence on the town's right-of-way, uh, and not within their property. So we rejected their permit. As a result, they sued the town. Okay? They first sued the town claiming that, uh, there was a wild deed. And as a result of the wild deed, they actually owned the, the town's right-of-way. They then filed the second litigation against the town claiming, uh, that they owned, uh, relating to their barn. You all remember the barn issue? They, uh, filed the litigation against the town claiming that the barn was vested. And then there was a third litigation revol- regarding their west, uh, right-of-way, uh, that was dedicated in, uh, the early nineteen hundreds, uh, claiming that, um, that they should get that right-of-way back. Okay? As a result of these three litigations, uh, we've been in court, uh, a few times. This culminated with a emergency hearing that they filed. They said it was an emergency to go before the judge to basically tell the town that it couldn't touch its right-of-way, uh, in the area. After a five-hour hearing, uh, where Rod Lay was the town's star witness, uh, the court, uh, found, uh, on all counts in favor of the town, uh, and advised them that there was, uh, no emergency. This is not an injunction and, you know, the town can do whatever it needs to do as it relates to its right-of-way. As a result of this, the town commenced preparing its right-of-way. Uh, we have had several meetings and, and some in public, some not in public. So, um, to let everyone know, and it's coming back before the Parks Board, we've met with, uh, Gay Chapels. There is always, um, an intent, when we met with New Testament Baptist Church, when they sold their property or when they had it under contract, to extend the town's, uh, trail system to go, uh, from, uh, inside Sunshine Ranches, which includes, uh, Palomino and I forgot, Hancock and there's some other streets there, up through a New Testament church to give a area where they could get across Griffin Road. And then I think it was down Volunteer was the other, to Flamingo was the other, uh, cross section. So, um, the town, as part of its, uh, getting its trails ready, commenced, uh, improvements within the right-of-way to get it ready to be utilized. As a result of the activity that the town, uh, was about to commence, uh, we received a call today from, uh, the McBrides Legal Council, advising us that the McBrides would like to, uh, settle their three cases with the town of Southwest Ranches. Um, the purpose of this, uh, introduction is to walk you through the settlement agreement to see if the town is in favor of resolving these three cases. First and foremost, I need to thank Rod Lay and our town's, uh, uh, staff, including Davie Police, for spending, uh, eight hours outside today, uh, dealing with right-of-way issues on Palomino. So truly Rod and to Davie PD, thank you for your assistance and hopefully it has culminated, uh, in a resolution of this matter, so. Um, what has been agreed to? And I'm gonna go right to it so we can see. I have before me an actually fully executed, uh, settlement agreement by the McBrides for your consideration. So this is not just an offer. This is a binding offer that's signed and, and for you for consideration. As you all know, the Zacco's property, which is directly to the west of McBride, has been there since the nineteen sixties. Marvin Holt's been out there till, since the nineteen sixties. It's hard to see exactly where the Zacco's fence is off of the edge of pavement, because the edge of pavement there changes several times. So it's anywhere between about eighteen to nineteen feet to twenty-four feet. And we went out there and measured it and figured it out, and partially because the road curves and partially because their fence isn't that straight. So the McBrides have, have accepted Councilmember Hartman's suggestion to move their fence to eighteen feet.
Jablonsky.
No, Councilmember Jablonsky was twenty. So Councilmember Hartman's suggestion to move the, uh, fence to eighteen feet. That being said, the McBrides have acknowledged and agreed that the town of Southwest Ranches is essentially correct and that the town owns the right-of-way adjacent to their home, both the, uh, south right-of-way along with the west right-of-way. That is owned by the town of Southwest Ranches. It's clear in the settlement agreement that the town owns that right-of-way. So what the McBrides asked is say, okay, we now acknowledge that you own that right-of-way. Do you mind municipality if we sign a maintenance and indemnification agreement, just like four hundred plus other homeowners have in the town, to move the fence to eighteen feet off the edge of pavement, to move it in eighteen feet? We'll get a permit for it and we'll move it in eighteen feet. And then, in the event that fifty percent or more of that new fence is ever damaged or needs to be replaced in the future, we'll agree to line it up wherever Zacco's is. So we didn't use the word Zacco's because they may not own the property in the future. So we said wherever that fence is to the west, they'll line up exactly where they, they are because it's too difficult to give an actual measurement because that fence sort of meanders. So they said in the future, they'll line up directly with their neighbor to have a wide right-of-way as you go down Palomino. So they've agreed to that. Um, they've also agreed that as it relates to the west property line, the one that will eventually be the trail that connects through New Testament, that, um, they will agree to maintain it. And when the town ever needs that trail to connect up to New Testament, they will move their fence and allow us to continue the trail through New Testament to make that a horse trail, which was obviously the original tent when the county and it was dedicated years ago. So they have agreed to allow the town to utilize that area as, as a trail. As it relates to the red barn, uh, they have agreed that it was not built legally, that it violates the setbacks, uh, but provided we agree to vest it, uh, in conformity with the town code, in twenty thirty-five, they will remove it. They've also agreed that in the event that more than fifty percent of the value of that barn, it needs to be repaired or replaced in accordance with the Florida Building Code, that they will remove it at that time as well and place it in the proper location. The McBrides have agreed, um, to enter into what we call the Maintenance and Indemnification Agreement with the town. Uh, they've actually signed the Maintenance and Indemnification Agreement. What this agreement says is that they will indemnify and hold us harmless if anyone is injured as a result of the location of their fence. It requires them to have insurance, naming the town as an additional insured in case anyone is, is injured as a result of the fence. And it also has very specific, uh, uh, language in here, acknowledging the fact that the town was correct and that the town owns and fee simple all of the right-of-way that surrounds their property. Um, I'm bringing this to you for consideration with a strong recommendation of approval. Um, unfortunately litigation occurs. Uh, sometimes emotions get in the way, which I, in my opinion, is why I think this extended as long as it did. Because Mayor, if, if you actually remember, when you and I went to mediation, we offered them actually a worse deal than this and they rejected it. So, you know, um, we've come a long way, but I think it's time personally for us to, um, agree, um, resolve this issue once and for all and, and to move on to bigger and better things. This would end three litigations that the town is, uh, doing. Um, and so I present it for you for discussion and consideration. If you agree to the terms, we will sign this and, and be done with this. Um, and happy to answer any questions as it relates to this.
So we can discuss, I make a motion to accept the settlement agreement? Any questions?
Any public comment on this matter?
I did not hear any, Noah Hollingsworth, one hundred ninety-eight thousand, I did not hear anything about legal fees.
Legal fees are borne by both sides. There's no prevailing fees.
And what are our fees on this that's going to the town?
Whatever the, ours are, theirs are probably three times more. I don't have that number in front of me. But I don't understand how knowing it would make any difference.
Just curious.
Yeah.
I mean, we'd have to look that up. How much is the town getting hit on, on this lawsuit that?
And again, we were sued, we weren't the aggressor. We were sued three times.
David Kozenski, sixty-four eleven Hollington Trail. Um, last time this, uh, came up before the council, um, I had spoken, uh, to try to encourage the parties to, uh, resolve this and I hope the town council sees fit that, uh, this can be resolved without additional litigation.
David Sears, five thousand Southwest two zero one Terrace. So, the McBrides sue Southwest Ranches. Admit that they're wrong and now we want to settle with them after spending money that this town does not have. And you guys are gonna accept this? With no letter of apology for what they put people through on Facebook and social media, slandering people's names? Everybody up there? This poor lady went to bat for them and they slander her on Facebook and removed the post. You accept this? You guys are gonna set a precedence. And that precedence can be very, very detrimental, detrimental to Southwest Ranches.
It's okay. Um, I, it was an emotional thing for them and I'm glad it's resolved. I'm glad it's coming to its conclusion. Um, they were emotional. That's all I can say about it. I don't take offense to it. I tried to help them and if this, if the little bit that I did helped them, fantastic. But I think we don't need to pursue this anymore. Uh, we got everything we want. They've got what they want, sort of. And, um, I think that we need to move on.
David Dodd, six five oh one. I'm just curious if I heard correctly, when they said secondary insurer, that means if something major were to happen and they have you under the secondary insurer, wouldn't that hold the town responsible? No? Okay.
Oh, no.
No, okay.
It's additional insured, not secondary insured. Yeah. One, one, seeing no more public comment, Mayor, um, just to add to one comment.
Sure.
If you reject the settlement, just thinking about it through, we go another four or five years in litigation to come to the conclusion that the town owns a right-of-way and they have to put their fence on the right-of-way. There's no attorney's fees in this case. It's a circuit court case with no ability to have attorney's fees. I cannot in good conscience tell you that that's in the best interest of the town. To me, i- it doesn't make sense to spend hundreds of thousands of dollars to get the same decision that you're getting today. So, that's why my recommendation is to settle.
Any comments up here?
I'd like to make some. For the legal end of it, we, uh, don't want to impact the town any more than we have to. And it is gonna cost thousands of dollars. He caused the residents here a lot of grief. Both of them did. And they badgered, belittled so many people on social media. And I hope everybody's careful what you put on social media, cause it's there. It's a record and people keep it. I have to agree with David. I think he owes a lot of people an apology. I think he owes apology to the town. Keith is right. At the end of the day, you're gonna get the same result. They didn't win. But their arrogance and their disrespect to everybody in this town was appalling. They're the ones that gotta pay for it, not us. If you think their neighbors are happy, go over to Palomino and spend an hour with them. It's horrible. They don't want them. They don't want nothing to do with them anymore. There was just something put on social media that involved them and the people they're upset with. And it was terrible. It was wrong and it was disrespectful. And I personally would have liked to have gotten a letter of apology. I think they owe it. I think they owe it to my legal and to all of us who live in this town. Does that make them part of us? I don't think it makes them part of us. They have a place here. I had asked Mr. McBride several times, "Do you live there?" He's like, "Shower there." So what I asked, never answered the question to anybody, anytime that was ever asked to him. Is he running a business out of there? That's what he was complaining about, the business across the street. You know, when you live in a glass house? Huh? Don't throw stones. I was very disappointed and, uh, like I said, I, I don't agree with what he did. But at the end of the day, um, I've listened to everything that I needed to and the results are going to be the same. They will. I don't want to drag it out four years and I don't want to cost the residents anymore than they've already had to incur. And, uh, you know? If he had to pay for our legal, would he be agreeing to this or would he be moving it back? You know? The fence isn't there. It's not there right now. He has to put it in. So what's the difference if he moves it back three more feet, four more feet, or five more feet? It doesn't belong to him at the end of the day. Thank you.
Anyone else?
No, I just, uh, I just briefly, I just want to mention that we've pretty much come full, full circle from the, the March meeting when we all voted, you know, five oh to, uh, to accept it. I think the only difference was a, a couple of feet is in the terms of, uh, what we came up with. And I'm, I'm fully in support of, you know, passing this tonight.
That was a five oh. We figured he would accept it. We didn't figure he'd walk outside and tell us all to go pound salt.
Yeah, I know.
Yeah.
A lot of things, a lot of things you have no control over.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah. That's true.
Well, excuse the term, but let's get done with kicking a dead horse.
Yeah, yeah.
So...
These, these people clearly didn't behave properly and I'd rather just see this behind us than us add any more energy to it.
Call the question, please.
Councilmember Hartman?
Yes.
Reluctantly, yes. Councilmember Fisickelli?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Jablonsky?
Yes.
Mayor McKay?
Yes.
Thank you, Council.
Motion passes.
There's no more legal comment.
Russell, you're up.
Thank you, Mayor. I don't have much other than to say that our esteemed leader, Andy Burns, will be back on Tuesday. I'm sure we'll all be sighing a little bit of relief that he'll be back in the office on Tuesday. The only other thing that I want to add, I want to just steal a little bit of Marty's thunder and report to you that we did receive a trickle of funding from FEMA for hurricane reimbursements to the tune of $59,000. That Marty quickly turned around and applied to our outstanding revolving credit line with TD Bank to help offset some of the interest expense that we have there. So, smart move by Marty. Thank you so much for doing that.
Okeydoke.
That's all I have, Mayor.
The vet, number eight, please.
A resolution of the Town Council of the Town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, approving a purchase order in the amount of $10,550 and zero cents with dykes, custom barns, and fencing to remove and replace the existing fence at the Country Estates Fishing Hole Park, authorizing the mayor, town administrator, and town attorney to enter into a purchase order, approving a budget amendment to the fiscal year 2018-2019 budget for the Country Estates Park Perimeter Fencing Improvement Project and providing an effective date.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any public comment on this matter?
Steve Rykrius, President of Country Estates HOA, 5120 Southwest 195 Terrace. I'd just like to say thank you. This is, you know, right now, it's a beautiful park, but it kind of looks like a prison as you drive by because of the fence and the barbed wire on top of it. This is, this is a huge step in the right direction. That park gets more use than I think any of us thought it would. It's always got folks there, and it's been, it's been great for the community out West. So, thank you for moving forward on this. Thank you.
Any additional public comment? Seeing none, public comment is closed. Back to the council.
Hi, I have a couple of things I'd like to say.
Go right ahead, Dee.
I'm not really even sure how this got on the agenda, but I took a ride out there, and I looked at the fence. And who in their right mind would leave barbed wire on a fence that children have access within 25 feet? Barbed wire. I think that's used in prisons to keep the bad guys in. But the barbed wire is there. It should have been removed prior to that park being open for kids. No, stay out of the park. Second thing is, the fence is not in bad shape. You're talking 650 feet. You're talking over $10,000. There's a pole or two that need to be straightened out or replaced, probably replaced because you tried to straighten it out, and now it's not going to have strength. Some of the fence needs to be stretched and put back into place. So, I'm not in favor of doing that. But I do have another question. That money was sitting there. Why wasn't it used to fix this fence before? It was just sitting there.
Last year.
Last year. Why didn't we get out there and fix the fence? I mean, the fence is not in bad shape, and the only reason I can honestly say that is I took a ride out there and looked at it. I was going to vote, and I thought, how can I vote on something that I haven't seen and I don't know what it looks like? And I'd been to the park for all the different events, but never paid attention. You know, and I heard stories about kids getting out and this and that and whatever, and I'm like, you know, that little park sits so close to that road. I had asked Russell to check into PVC pipe so that aesthetically, it would look like the other parks, and it would be pretty. Because if we're going to do it in one part of town, we should do it in the other part of town. And it was pointed out to me by someone very special to me, my husband. Happy anniversary, Mike. There's small little kids playing within a reach of Griffin Road. So you really have to have something more secure than the PVC. So with that, you might as well not even look into that, because it really doesn't make any sense to put something that's more pleasing to the eye, but not safe for the kids.
Right. Councilmember Schroeder, we did look into that issue, and that was exactly the answer. The PVC fence type fencing would not basically do what we want it to do, which is to keep kids, potentially animals, from getting out of the park, and also to prevent vandals from coming into the park that way.
Yeah.
Remember the water system's right there.
Yes. So, but I still want to know, if that money had been allocated and had been sitting there, why wasn't it used to fix the fence?
Councilmember Schroeder, if you would allow me a moment to answer that question. We did budget this project last year, and we were looking at various options. And when we looked at the different options for that, for the fence, the funding, or the proposals that came in for replacing that fence were much higher than what we had allocated in the budget. And so that's why that funding was rolled over to this year. We looked at revising the project so that it would fit what was budgeted, and that's what you have before you today. We have a revised project that would include vinyl coated chain link fence. We did receive four proposals from four different companies, and the lowest-priced company was within the budgeted amount that we had from last year.
Let me jump in on this, if I may. Where are we on the, with DOT or whoever, on the road widening from that section the rest way out to US 27?
I...
Do we have any news or update related to that?
I don't have an update on that, but possibly Emily has something she'd like to share.
Okay.
Thank you, Emily.
Hi, Mayor and Council.
Hi.
The, at your next meeting, there's going to be a resolution of support to add this project to the Broward County Long Range Transportation Plan. So that's going to be coming before you at the next meeting.
Okay, what, how far down the road are we looking at this possibly happening?
It will be, this will be for the 2045 plan, so it'd be within that range. There are lots of projects within the plan, but they haven't actually allocated a year for the project. But we have to have a letter of support to put it into the plan.
Okay.
Before they'll do that.
Not a problem. I was just thinking if it was any time in the near future, you know, why are we going to spend $10,000 on a fence when the roadway might take some of that section? But I did go out, drive out there myself and look at it, but I truthfully think that if you place some poles and do some patchy on that fence, that I just hate to throw $10,000 at that fence at 600 feet of it. I just have a little dilemma of that. I think we can get away with half that, getting it fixed and getting some poles replaced and cutting that barbed wire off the top of that fence, but...
Yeah, I've got a question about it as well.
Did.
Okay, go ahead and jump in.
You know, all fences are not created equal.
Correct.
The fence that's out there is commercial-grade fence. It's galvanized. It's white because of the galvanization process. I'm not arguing one way or the other where we should replace it, but I'm hoping we're replacing it with something like, because the fence I put across my front yard is not the same kind of fence we ought to be using for a public park. You know, the kind of fence you put across your front yard, a couple of people climb over it, it looks pretty bent up. We don't want that kind of fence. And I didn't see anything that specified the gauge.
No.
Of the fencing. So what are we getting for the 10 grand?
Russell, go ahead and tell it.
I can address that.
You can?
Yes, Councilmember Hartman. The proposal includes the installation of 650 feet of nine-gauge wire, and that's, and then all of the commercial hardware that would go along with that. So this is a commercial application of the fence.
Okay, it's commercial fence, commercial-grade fence. I'm not clear on what nine gauge is, but I'll take your word for it. Well, I know how that works, bud.
Did we check into getting it fixed, having somebody say?
I don't think we got any pricing on repair, did we?
So...
No, the direction was to replace the fence, to remove the barbed wire fencing and to replace it, the entire section of fence.
Okay, well, I would have a request that we try to get some estimates on getting it repaired and replacing what sections of poles that we need to. And I would tell you that if they're stupid expensive on taking off the barbed wire on the top, that I'm confident with some volunteers and heavy equipment that we can come out there and get it done ourselves. But I would rather table this and get some pricing, come back to us, and see what kind of money we can get to get it fixed and fixed right, not spend $10,000 on it.
All right. Let me jump in here, guys.
Go ahead.
We, we looked at this years ago. Mary Gay, I know you're chomping at the bit from the Parks Board, and there's holes in that fence. It's aged, deteriorated. It's, it's not in as great a shape as everybody's talking about here. And the Parks Board has looked at it numerous times, and we really need to replace it.
Well, none of us are really experts at it, and I think to have somebody go out there and give us a price to replace it is where I'd like to go with that.
Repair it.
Repair it.
That's what we have.
Repair it, repair it. Sorry.
I think we did that. Mary Gay, didn't we do that at one point a couple, several years ago?
Yeah, some time back, but they didn't really want to bother you. Most of them walked away from it.
Yeah, because it was just too problematic.
Well, yeah, it's not as much money to somebody that wants to come out and do it for $10,000 or $15,000.
Come to the mic, Mary, please.
I had several people go out there. What we're supposed to do now is take the fence down, put new pipe in, concrete in the pipe, and put up green fence.
Black.
The treated green fencing so that it will have a more calming look instead of the chain link, you know, shiny look. But when they went out there, they said, "We will be liable when we, when we fix this fence." And they were looking at the age of the fence, the pipe. Some of the pipes are bent. Some of the pipes are rusted off. And they, they really didn't want to bid on it, to be honest with you. I think that for the cost against pipe, when you were looking at regular, as you said, nice fencing there, in pipe, it would be very expensive. To put a new chain link green fence up there is not going, $10,000 is not 40. And if you go to the three-board plastic fencing and try to go all the way around, you're upping the numbers with it.
Yeah, I, I agree with that, but like I said, I mean, that's not safety for the kids, so...
No, correct.
I'm not opposed to the...
Well, somebody even suggested...
Nobody likes chain link, but that's a safe, safety issue for, for the kids and animals. So that's okay, but I'd still like to...
The discussion was more or less to make it more pleasing to the eye, and Doug had even suggested at one of the meetings that we paint it. You know, if we repair it, we paint it. You know, after a while, you don't, let's face it, you don't want to look like you're doing patchwork on everything. You know, this is a new park. $10,000 to put up a fence that faces Griffin Road that, that is safe and pleasing to the eye is not a lot of expense.
I'd rather see you put some money in the ball field so you could use it, because now it's a rock pit.
Well, I think that's a whole, I think that's a whole different issue. That would cost a lot more money than the $10,000. I just, I, I'm for doing this. We've kicked this down the road for about a year, the board, and we've tried everything. We've gone out, we've looked at it. Definitely, the barbed wire has to come down one way or the other.
Agreed.
And so that was what we came up with as board. That was our recommendation. Thank you.
The good news, the good news behind it is it's from last year's budget, and it's no, it's not any new allocation of money. It's already been, it's sitting parked.
But it's, it's been sitting for a long time. It's not going to hurt to let it sit and maybe have somebody, a couple of people go out and really take a look at it and come back with some, some more information, because it's, like Bob said, it's not here. And I'd like to know what it would cost to, to have it fixed.
I don't know, I think, I disagree with that. It's, it's been, it's been gone around so many times.
So many things have come up, Gary, have gone around so many times. Like I said, I'm new to this. It never came before me. I haven't seen anything else except for this, and that's it, so...
Well, it did, it did come before you because it was in the previous budget.
Right.
Okay.
But there was nothing with that either.
That was a budget we all voted for. So it did come before us. We did talk about it briefly, all right? It wasn't, you know, the highlight of the, of the night.
I think your other point is that it didn't get spent last year, and it didn't get done. And here we are this year, and it's a matter of getting another opinion, so...
Well, it didn't get spent because it was too not cost-effective at that point. Now it has become that. We've lessened the scope of it, and now we're, now we're there.
I'd just like to see what it would cost to have it repaired. It didn't look bad to me. I'm not a fence expert. I don't know much about it.
I have a question. Can we table it for 30 days and get some other suggestions or input, and bring it back in 30 days?
Is it an emergency? That's what the question is.
It's not.
It's not.
So just to be clear on what the, the work we'd be asking for, we want to remove the barbed wire, right? Because, I mean, I don't think there's an argument there.
Correct.
Now, once we remove the barbed wire, we've got a foot and a half of posts above that. So I'm assuming, no, you don't?
You cut those off.
Okay.
Or they, or they cut them.
Stop. That's, that's what I'm trying to bring out.
Yeah.
It ain't free. Nobody's going to go there and cut those off, whether it's a foot, whether it's six inches. It's not going to take any difference in time to run a pipe cutter around 60 posts, 70 posts. So, we want the posts shortened. That was the point. We want all of the, the damage to the fence repaired, right? That fence is also missing because I put up the Country Estates signs on it. It's missing those wraps that you put on it that holds the fence to the posts themselves. So it would need to be refreshed or refreshed or rebuilt or remodeled, or I don't know the right word for it, but it needs to be...
Rejuvenated.
Rejuvenated. I like that word. Mark that down, rejuvenated. But the point is, we need to, we need to articulate what it is we want done, so somebody doesn't come back with a bill for five, two grand, or five grand, or nine grand to say, "We're going to fix the snags in the fence." So we, I just want to make sure we're clear, so we can compare against what we think we're getting.
I would tell you, I would think that if it's half or less a repair, I'd be on board. If it's any more than that, I'd say replace the whole thing.
That's why we're doing this, right? Right. So we can make an intelligent decision. Because, you know, it's my neighborhood. I'd love to see a new fence in. But I'm also a council member with fiduciary responsibility to our taxpayers, and say, if we can save five grand or six grand, I'm all for it. I, I'm not arguing, but I want to see the numbers, Gay.
You need to stop.
Yeah. And that, from, you're not on the mic, so we're in council member comments. So my suggest is table it for 30 days. I don't know if anybody wants to...
And get an estimate to repair based on what we just discussed.
Or a couple, yes.
Yeah, of course. Based on what we're discussing here.
Russell, what?
We, I believe we have a motion and a second on the, on the floor right now for approval, so...
Yeah, but a motion and table is going to trump that anyway.
Okay, I just want to make sure that we recognize that.
Okay.
So I'd like to make a motion to table it till, for 30 days.
Well, no, let's just table it to the next meeting.
Not next, because that's in two weeks.
That's in two weeks.
We're going to need longer than two weeks to...
It's been sitting there for a year.
Listen, people might be slow getting back here, getting out to give us an estimate, you know, or not.
I would advise, I would advise the second meeting in July as well, just to be able to get proposals and have people come out to the site.
It'll need more than a week.
30 days. Two meetings.
Russell says two meetings, 30 days to give him time.
Well, top 30 days, it's going to be a time term. What is the date of that?
July 25th, I believe is the date.
Yep. So if you could table it to July 25th at 7:00 PM. I'll second that.
Okay. All right, call the question.
Councilmember Hartman?
Yes.
Councilmember Schroeder?
Yes.
Councilmember Fisickelli?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Jablonsky?
Yes.
Mayor McKay?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Number nine, please.
A resolution of the Town Council of the Town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, approving the selection negotiation committees, recommendations, and ranking for external audit services, authorizing the mayor, town administrator, and town attorney to enter into an agreement with Keith Nikolov and Company, LLP, the top-ranked vendor in substantially the same form as Exhibit A, providing for severability, providing for conflicts, and providing for an effective date.
I make a motion to execute the contract with the, the top, the top firm.
Say that again.
He's, he's making a motion to approve the resolution.
Okay, second.
Thank you. That's simple.
I didn't catch all of it.
That's why you're a lawyer.
Any public comment on this matter? Seeing none, public comment closed. Back to the council.
Mr. Mayor, excuse me, I'd like to make a...
Go right ahead.
I, I, let's see if there's questions for Marty.
I, I, let's see if there's questions for Marty.
Okay, thank you, council.
No, you can go ahead. There's going to be questions, trust me.
So, but please ask, I mean, there's.
Well, we have a bunch of, I, well, let me back up, a month ago, I went to Andy and to Marty about this, and, uh, had, uh, some input, had talked to some other people about it, and, uh, I had some issues about it, and I asked them to put it back out. And through, uh, about an hour conversation, they, uh, said that they thought it was fine the way it was, and so on and so forth. And I said, "Well, under the circumstances, July 1st, the policy or the committee group changed."
The law.
The law changes on how this is done moving forward. And, um, so, you know, I actually wanted to go under the new guidelines or rules, and I acquired with Keith, and he said I couldn't do it till Jul, till July 1st. And, um, so basically, uh, Andy shot me down on it, and Marty thought it was good and all this, so, here we are, and we're moving forward. I'm not pleased with how this was done. That's my own opinion.
So, Doug, you said you had spoken to somebody roughly a month ago, were we still under cone of silence during that timeframe?
No, I don't think so.
I'm not, I'm asking our attorney.
We're, we're under a cone of silence, but only as related to the vendors, I re-looked at it about an hour ago. So, if a vendor or one of their agents, uh, contacted a council member, it would disqualify that firm.
And was it Vinnie Grandi who you spoke to, Doug?
Was one of the people.
Okay, so Vinnie Grandi is a lobbyist, even though he's claiming he's not representing anybody on this, I think he's the greatest guy in the world if he got this far, and you got the same five emails I got last night.
Absolutely.
I don't believe he's not a lobbyist, but he's not here to ask any questions, so, you know, when a lobbyist approaches me, I look at motives of lobbyists, they want to get the job for their, uh, their clients. Now, how do lobbyists do that? They influence, they call, what he calls elected, you can find lots of stuff about this guy on the web, he refers to elected officials as the elected. Uh, he finds any way he can to put something in the process to open it up so he can lobby us, because when there's a cone of silence in place, he's not supposed to do that, if he's legitimately representing somebody. Now, he's claiming he doesn't, but he has a history of doing that too, when he is representing. Are you aware that he also worked for one of the firms that is, uh, one of the bidders?
Yes.
Okay, so, basically, what he does is he does anything he can to get in there and stop things so that he can then spend time trying to persuade us that regardless of what our administration, who we trust to do this job, who is following the, uh, the procurement guidelines that we've set up, he jumps in to try to figure out a way to say, "It's wrong." He quotes things that aren't true, he's not a lawyer, so you can't get him through the bar, he's a CPA. And his whole job is to get it directed to his, or to get his client another shot at it, that's what they pay him to do. Now, clearly, he's put some thoughts in your mind, he's created potentially confusion in your mind that we're not following our own process. I read all his stuff, I don't trust him, I don't believe him, it's his opinion. Now, I trust our team.
So is the opinion of the people on this committee, it's those people's opinion.
Of cour, well.
And the opinion is skewed by quite a bit.
Whose opinion is that? Is that your opinion or the lobbyist's opinion?
Oh, no, I would tell you by on the scale of charts, on how they rank them, and the numbers things, that, uh, it's a little interesting.
So, what we're saying there is we chose the wrong people, and I, I know their credentials, and I'm aware of who they are too, we're saying that they're, they weren't capable to do this assessment, or they have some ulterior motives.
Well, let me give you a different idea. If you read what the new regulation is compared to what the old one is, I think that'll give you a little different opinion.
To me, the delta between the old and the new is why we had so much corruption in Broward County in our school board rep that Patty Good replaced, went to jail. The new law says that we as elected officials can sit on that board. When Broward County did that at the school board level, when they did it at the Broward County level in construction, people went to jail because elected, in, in cities in Broward County as well, elected officials got right in the middle of the process, the lobbyists could talk to them, the elected officials got swayed, in some cases took money, and went to jail. I'm all for the way things are today that we don't sit, I used to sit on those boards as a resident, I thought it was the most fun thing in the world. I don't want to be in the position now where I've got 16 lobbyists calling me to per firm to try to persuade me that, A, our process is wrong, or their client is the best, and screw up the process. To me, we have a perfectly good process, we've used it for other things, and now I realize there's a difference with the auditors, because, uh, you have to have a selection committee, they call it the audit committee, but I think our, our team did a good job. I mean, if it's your opinion that it's skewed, based on whatever your knowledge of it is, I respect that. But, you know, if, if a lobbyist tells me it's skewed, they said, "Hmm, must not be in the favor of your client," right? Because I've dealt with lobbyists for a long time, now I deal with salesmen, it's really the same thing. But I don't, I don't trust people from the outside telling us that Marty and, uh, Marty who executed the process, uh, uh, our town clerk who was part of the process, and Keith who helped draft the overall, uh, law that put this in place, are all wrong. I, I think that there are people out there that they have their agenda, and I don't want to get sucked in by that. I read all this stuff.
Well, if I could just jump in for a second.
No, no, please do, I was about to lick my lips and take a break.
I also, um, spoke to Mr. Grande and got the same exact information that you did. And I will tell you one thing that was said, he had no problem at all. One of the most astute and outstanding people that he's ever known for 20 years, he said, was Russell, and he was damn near spot on. And so was Marty, he did not say anything derogatory about them at all. It was the other people in the process, whatever their names were.
Yeah, that aren't part of the town.
That's not part of the town that was questionable, okay? When a seed is planted, you can say, "Oh, I'm not going to pay attention to it." But all it's going to take is one little thing in this town, and somewhere in the back of your memory, you're going to say, hmm. You're a thinker, and you're going to think about it, and, and there was questions like, um, "Why didn't we wait for the new rule to come into place?" "Was the contract up?" Um, a phone call was made to them and asked, "Was that the best they could do for the town? Was there any play in it? Was everybody given the same opportunity? Was the call made to a lot of other people?" These were the things I was hearing, and I'm not, you know, I have a hard time with a checkbook, so I'm not a finance person. Most of the people that get put in these positions up here are the local people, it's not their forte, it's not what we do. So, when someone raises a red flag, you cannot turn away from it and not address it at all. It could be one of the biggest mistakes that you would make, and our job is to always protect. And I have to go by what my legal advises also. They're never going to put us in harm's way, maybe you guys, but not me. But, so, you have to listen to that, we, we've had discussions, I had my discussion with, with Russell this week, and different things like that, there's, so there's, there were so many things, and it's, I am confused. So, for me to sit up here and say, "Oh, I got it, this guy's right, he's right on the track," I couldn't say that. You know, I am confused, I do have questions, and, and they have to be answered before, you know, Bob, before you can make a good decision, you have to have everything in play.
Keith, just a quick question, this, the new ordinance that governs the rules on audit selection law, they were just passed in this session, right?
A, a, a few things, um, Councilmember Hartman, when our, RFP went out for auditor, the eventual law wasn't even drafted.
That's what I was about to say.
Right.
This didn't even exist.
Correct.
So, the changes should have had no impact.
It has.
On our decision-making upfront.
From a legal standpoint, our, RFP, um, meets all legal requirements. Whether or not you want to accept the recommendations of the committee is a policy decision of the council.
Right, right, so, we conform to the laws as they are today.
Correct.
If we defer this, Marty, what's the impact to your process if we were to defer this to next Monday and make a decision at the next meeting, or say we want to open this back up? How much more time would it take you and your team to redo the process?
Technically, it would be a tremendous burden, I will not be able to get to committee members that have already sat and presented, uh, uh, as well as all the firms, and this will jeopardize our CAFR for the end of the year, most likely requiring an extension past, uh, the, uh, GFOA award submission, so. Uh, and along with that, I defer to legal, because then we're into July, which in effect, um, uh, could be an issue with that process, so, um, it'll be a tremendous burden.
So, he is trying to achieve the purpose here of putting doubt in our head about our own process, he's trying to get us to conform with new laws that will put a significant burden on our staff. So, in my opinion, again, he's a lobbyist, to get his firm a second look. I think it's in our town's best interest to go with the process that we, we started with.
Okay, so let me ask you a different question. Um, if we want to do a year extension and put it back out, how would that work? And when does the one that we have right now, who, who are doing our auditing, when does that contract expire?
It's over.
It's already over?
Yeah.
Okay, so if we wanted to extend them another year, you can't do it?
No.
Okay.
They've, they've met their.
Obligation?
Their end obligation.
Let me jump in here for a second.
Go ahead, that's all.
You know, I got, I got a lot of faith in Marty and Russell and the selection committee and the, and the process that we put forward, the procurement, and especially Andy, I got a lot of faith in these people, and they're doing their job. And they, this RFP went out back in February, I believe, uh, you know, the, the, the state law hadn't, it wasn't even a glimmer in somebody's eye at that point. You know, I think everybody's done their job correctly, and I think they've done a good job, and, you know, I, I think we need to move forward with this, is where, where I'm going. Um, I do usually defer to Steve and, and Bob during the, the heavy financial stuff, because that's their forte, and, but, you know, we've got a really good team put together, and, uh, I'm fully in support of them, I just want to mention that. I, I think the process works, it has worked in the past several years, after we cleaned, after everything got cleaned up 10 years ago, or 11, 12 years ago, whenever it was, and, uh, it continues to, we have, uh, continued to have balanced budgets and, uh, good, good reviews and good reports, uh, throughout the years, and I see no reason to change that.
Being the new kid on the block, I've never been through the process, that, that's all I'm saying, I'm, I'm not saying anybody has done anything not right and not good, I have a good relationship with Marty, he takes so much time to explain everything and how it works. Like I said, it was a seed that was planted, and, you know, there was, like, at the time that this went out, did we, why, why we didn't consider keeping them, that, that was one of my questions, why did we switch? The, the bus wasn't broke, so.
You, you had to.
We had to, okay.
First of all, I, I want to explain this, the old contract, it was done, you already done your extensions, that contract was over. A, B, council and prior council made it adamantly clear to both legal and administration that it felt it was in the best interests of the town to go out for procurement to get a secondary set of eyes on the town, meaning that you all didn't even really want to consider the original firm because you wanted a new firm to come in with a new perspective to review the town's books and records. So, staff did everything that the council asked, and that's why the old firm was, um, you know, the contract is, it was over. We went out for a bid, the old firm actually even responded to the bid, um, and, uh, but the, the committee, I was not at the meeting, but the committee elected to go with the, the highest-ranked vendor. I was then called and said, "Listen, the highest-ranked vendor, we believe, is the best, uh, qualified, responsible, responsive, uh, vendor, but we're, we're a little concerned about the price." So, I immediately reached out to probably the individuals here, I just don't remember the name.
Mr. Bill Benson.
And, and I said, "Listen, you know, the town council, uh, the town would really like to utilize your services, uh, but we're a little gun-shy with your price." And they responded, "Well, we're happy to come back and do it for exactly what the second lowest vendor agreed to as their price," and they came down substantially, uh, on the amount that they were going to charge the town. Um, as a result of that, Marty, you know, felt very comfortable in recommending them, uh, for award. Uh, two things I want to mention, just from a legal standpoint, A, none of the vendors had an issue with the process. Not one of them filed a bid protest in this matter within the protest period, okay? I want to make that clear. So, if someone had an issue with it that's not bidding on it, you know, that, that's totally, doesn't make a difference. None of the people who actually bid on it filed a bid protest, none of them. Also, I want to make it clear that even in the emails that you received from the lobbyists, uh, they had very good words to say about the person who won the award. So, they weren't even trying to discredit the, the ultimate, uh, uh, party that was, uh, being recommended by the town. But from my standpoint, uh, the, the staff did exactly what their charge was from the council, the law changed, you know, after actually the RFP went out and, and the award was given, um, and at this point, it's here for your consideration.
Had this law firm ever benefited in any way with the town in the past?
Yes, accounting firm, this, the, the firm who, uh, was awarded it did accounting work for the town, probably.
2006 to 2010, in the past.
And then for the last, I guess, nine years, eight, eight, nine years, you've been with the other firm, and after RFP, the one from 10 years ago, uh, won it again.
I just wouldn't be me if I didn't ask these questions, and like I said, I, I've never been through that process for that, and, uh, some of the things that were said were quite intimidating, I guess, and, uh, I felt I needed to ask and get the right answers, and no offense, you know, I mean, I've been very happy, I, like I said, I've never come in and not had my question answered completely, you know? And, and I appreciate that very much, so, it's a learning process, and that's what I'm doing.
Steve, let me just educate you a tiny bit further, with public companies, it's the board of directors generally that assign the work to the accounting firms, the, the audit firms, I should say, because the audit firms are the watchdogs of the board of directors to make sure management isn't cheating or stealing like Enron and Tyco and all those other companies. It's a healthy practice to turn over your audit firms every six, eight, 10 years, because the concern from executive, from the board, is always that they're getting too comfortable with management, they're getting too used to, "We need new eyes to come in and look at how we do our things," because Marty's been working with the same guys as long as he's been here, and they're good, and I'm not, this isn't a criticism, but familiarity, okay? They get completely comfortable with our processes, we do something differently, they don't pick up on it, and we have a problem. So typically, you get new eyes in every six, eight, 10 years, so that they have to look at your processes, they have to sign that same piece of paper that current auditors do, but with completely different people going through our processes. So, it's fairly standard to roll over in that timeframe. Would, do you agree, Marty?
Yes, that's generally the, uh, situation, it's a good idea, and we welcome a new firm, uh, with open arms.
It's a fresh approach, it's got a completely new set of eyes looking at everything in a, in a fresh light, you know? I think, you know, and the fact that there was no bid protests, as Keith mentioned, you know, speaks volumes as to the whole selection committee, the way, the way it operates, you know? So, I think we, I think we need to move forward with this.
I, excuse me, one other thing I wanted to say, like, to personally thank Bill Benson and his team because the prime criteria, which was included in this unrelated third party, price is not a permitted per Florida statute to be a primary component. We only use 25% on part A, 5% on part B. As it turned out, the Keith McCullough wasn't the lowest price. They were the third lowest price. I want to thank Keith, legal counsel, because due to his efforts over a five-year basis, he, and Bill Benson, was able to lower the price to the second lowest price of $10,000 of savings. So, approximately 2,000 a year. So, I want to thank you for that, and he was on no obligation to do that for us.
I have one more question. Do we have a formula that, that you use to, to rate the companies? Is it like something standard from the county, or?
The, the ranking system, as the only guideline, is may not be primarily on price, and that's 51% or solely on price, 100%. And I passed out to you all the seven criteria, primarily based on education, experience, for all the criteria that all the individual members utilized.
Okay, because in some of the stuff that Russell had given me, and I had taken the time to look at it, like I said, I'm not quite sure what I'm looking at, but the way, and this just happened to be Russell's, the way he rated them kind of backs this up. But then I looked at some others, and I thought, well, how did they come up with their ranking when all the bids themselves, we're not, we're not talking 50, $100,000 difference in price? I mean, they were all fairly close. Am I way off in my field? Because I feel like I am.
I, I want, I want to just make a comment about that only because I deal with this often. You had really qualified firms bid, okay? So, the purpose of the selection committee is to bring in experts and individuals who see things in a different light, and the lowest vendor, highest vendor, whatever the point system is, wins. It's when you get bids with these sort of qualified firms, that all the bids are the same, is when legally we question what went on here. You know, you want to see bids with a broad range of independent thought and views from the individual committee members because that is a good sign that no collusion occurred in the ranking of the individuals.
Okay, well, thank you guys for the lesson. Don't send me a bell, but thank you anyways.
Marty?
That's all I have right now.
Call the question.
Councilmember Hartman?
Yes.
Councilmember Schroder? Yes. Councilmember Fisickelli?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Jablonsky?
Yes.
Mayor McKay?
No.
Sorry. Last item on the agenda, well, last resolution, Mayor's 10. A resolution of the Town Council of the Town of Southwest Ranges, Florida guaranteeing the town's performance of construction of the required improvements as set forth in the attached installation of required improvements agreement with Broward County, authorizing the appropriate town officials to execute the installation of required improvements agreement with Broward County and providing for an effective date. This header is much more difficult than the actual item. So, I, I want to explain the item. We bought the CCA property from CCA. When we bought the property, CCA had a letter of credit up with the county saying that one day when it was developed, it would cause 207th, I think is actually the roadway, to be constructed to connect to the CCA facility. There's an agreement with Bergeron that I know the mayor knows well because he's brought it up to him that basically says that Bergeron is supposed to build that roadway. But even with that agreement on the table, CCA had to bond for the development of the roadway. About two years ago, about a year and change ago, the Town Council passed a resolution basically saying to CCA, you can get your letter of credit back because you don't own that property anymore. So, the Town Council already adopted this and said you can get your letter of credit back. Broward County didn't accept the town's resolution, and it pulled CCA's letter of credit and took the money.
Oh, my God.
Okay? So, th- this is what happened. This is a true story. So, since then, CCA has been fighting with the county to try to get their money back for the road to be built to a property that it no longer owns. So, after working for six months with the county attorney's office, they have finally come to language and an agreement with us that provided we agree that if that property, if and when that property is ever developed, that there will have to be a roadway built to that property, then they'll give CCA their money back. To which I said to the county attorney's office, how would you get there if it was built and there's no roadway there unless you build a road? So, that's why the town's not spending any money on this. We're not putting up a bond. We're not having yearly fees. The county just wanted the town on the record saying that when this site is ever developed, a road will be built, named 207, to access the eventual location. And if we agree to this, which is all that agreement says, then they'll give CCA their money back. That's the whole reason for this.
Do we have to name it 207, or can we call it Broward County Black Hole? This is wrong, what they're doing.
Pooh Pooh Road.
Pooh, there you go. Broward County Pooh Pooh Road.
So, that's it, in a nutshell.
I'm sorry, I have friends there. So, I guess I, I'll make a motion that we, we agree to the county's demands.
Yes, second.
Any public comment on this matter? Seeing no, public comment is closed. Back to us. Any additional questions on this matter?
One more time, Keith. No financial liability, right?
No, I assume, that being said, if the town develops that site for any reason, then yes, then we're going to have to build a road. But I don't think we intend to build that site.
But we would be developing it on somebody's behalf, and that would be part of the lease and the contract, and blah, blah, blah.
Correct.
Build it.
Call the question.
Councilmember Hartman?
Yes.
Councilmember Schroder?
Yes.
Councilmember Fisickelli?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Jablonsky?
Yes.
Mayor McKay?
Yes. All right.
The next item, Mayor, is yours, which is the Terra Ranch condition of approval discussion.
If you would explain exactly what happened. We didn't have, we did not, the intention was to make Terra Ranches do the exact same thing that Bella Ranches did. And what we passed was not the same. So, I'd just like us to fix it so it matches. So, that's what it is.
This is a discussion item, Keith?
Yeah, sure, Mayor, just if I can expand upon what you're saying a little bit. The mayor is correct, in, in, in some degree, but it's a policy decision of how you want to proceed.
But that was the intent.
I, I just said the mayor was correct. I don't get to say that often. So, you were absolutely correct on that. So, let me explain. That was a joke, by the way. The, 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 what occurred was, there was a question about when the permit, when the roadway would have to be built. Jeff Kadam stated three times, and I asked him this on the record, is this the same as the Bella one? And he said it was. What Bella was, was that the road had to be built after the fourth house CO, okay? What Jeff brought before the council was, the road had to be built before the fourth house permit, okay? So, there's obviously a difference. So, it's totally policy decision of the council whether or not it wants to keep the way it adopted it or go back through the process and, and adopt it the other way. So, but that is what happened, you know?
Anyhow, I think we should fix it.
I agree.
I agree.
I think we should fix it on the next one. I think we should leave this one alone. Toothpaste is out of the tube. And, you know, I, we're talking about a national company here, Toll Brothers. You know, if, because we're really talking about a cash flow situation, is really what you're talking about here. And if this was a situation where Toll Brothers has a cash flow problem, we're doing them a favor. Okay? I agree that we should probably straighten out the policy in the long run, but we can do that on the next go-round. This one's already been done. It's in the can. It's, it was a 5-0 vote. Everybody agreed.
What we committed to them was that we do this, whatever we expected of Bella Ranches is what we were going to expect of them, and we didn't give them that.
That's what I remember, that we were going to mirror it. Whatever we did for one, we were going to do for the other. That's what I remember.
So, so here's my dilemma. I agree with both of you. We made a certain commitment. So, if we change our mind.
Well, let me, let me jump in real quick.
Sure.
I asked Jeff Kadam, and on more than one occasion, to make sure what it was because Bella Ranches came before us at least three times about different things, tried to get out of the turn lane and everything else, and we kept it in. So, the process changed along the way, and he didn't bring us the last thing that we approved. So, I would tell you, it's on Jeff Kadam's at this point.
Well, yeah, but we're still the council, and we make the decisions.
Yeah, but as far as.
And, and that's the bit of the issue. I mean, we made a commitment to them on one way to handle it. If we leave it the way it is, we're not really abiding by our commitment and our word. But I think Gary's point is that what, what it turned into is something better for the town. You know, if, if the turn lane is in, and they put a sales center, and they're generating, you know, 100 cars a weekend or a day with traffic into their little sales center trailer that they want to put up, it helps our residents, right? Which was our ultimate goal. So, do we go back on our word and assist the residents? Or do we stand by our word because we're the town council, and we want to maintain our credibility?
That just sounds like a technicality.
Everything that we stipulated.
It just sounds like a technicality. You have to stand on your word. You told, you told a man something, and you should, your word should be your word.
I wish it was that simple.
I, I know.
I don't think it is.
It's that simple to fix?
Not really. You're talking about five people voting in unison.
Okay, and we're also talking about five people that gave their word to keep it the same that the other person did.
Does this take a 5-0 vote?
Yes.
This is a question additionally, yeah.
Takes a 5-0 vote, yeah.
Yes.
That, that vote's been done and committed.
Okay, so it's done because he's going to vote no, so why are we discussing it? He's going to vote no.
I just don't see him have mud on his face if he does.
Okay, I say call it.
There's nothing to call.
Oh, well.
Well.
It's a discussion item.
It's a discussion item, but we want to bring it back to fix it. So, the majority says do that, from what I see. Okay?
I'm not in favor. I'm not in favor of bringing it back.
You're one. I'm in favor of yes, bring it back.
I'm not, I'm sorry.
Mayor, if I may, from a legal standpoint, just to try to help the discussion. Russell pointed me to the backup, for any resident who may have seen it. I personally don't believe the backup was actually what was the final version. Because in your backup, page three, it says, in addition to the sales trailer, owner may receive two certificate of occupancies prior to construction of the turn lane. I don't think that's where it wound up. And I just want to clarify the record that I believe it was after four COs.
I think it was the third CO, but let's leave it to Jeff Kadam to bring it back and fix it.
Third CO? I thought it was at.
I thought it was the end of the third CO, I believe, but I'm not sure.
It's at the end of the third CO, that's almost what you approved.
Almost, but it's not. It's, it's, it's different, I promise you. But it's not much different. That's what I'm trying to say to you. But it's enough to matter to them.
So, to, to let the council know the process, should you choose to rehear it, or revisit the item, it would require advertisement in the, in the newspaper, whatever cost that is, and to bring it back to you for a formal hearing. Obviously, if Councilmember Jablonsky is telling you now that he's not voting for it, it won't be passed. So, it's up to you all how.
I wouldn't bring it anyway.
And again, with the majority vote.
That's a 5-0.
Because I want you to have mud on your face.
Huh? What? You want to put mud on my face? Are you serious?
I think you voting no to us saying that's what we're going to agree to, and that we agreed to in the future, I just.
All right, so based on what I just heard, I make a motion we don't bring it back. We're not here to throw mud at each other. We're supposed to all be on the same side.
Idea. I mean, that's ridiculous.
Well, we made a commitment to match.
Chuck, I argued both sides. I mean, I understand the issue. But your, your rationale for bringing it back, can't stand behind that.
To make me look bad? Come on.
Hold on. You won't fix the problem that we passed, that we committed something to. I can't believe you're going to vote no against that.
Boys, go to your corners. The thing is, if we agreed to it, then that's what we should be going on. Not about mud, or who did what, or who's on per.
That's not what I'm hearing. I'm, I'm just telling you what I'm hearing.
Yeah, well, that's, you know, testosterone, or whatever you call that stuff. But if we gave our word, that's.
I'm here to do the right thing, and we should fix this problem.
That's all I'm here for.
Mayor? If I may, because I'd like to do two things, if I may, because I didn't have this discussion with you, and I, I think you spoke to Andy about bringing this back. I never spoken to you about this. First, I don't know what the original language is. Meaning that nothing in this backup shows me the original language. I, I think the first thing the town has to figure out is what we're comparing to the original language to the second language.
Isn't that in the minutes?
It's not.
It's wrong.
It's not. It's not in this backup at all, what Bella was agreed to.
Do we have the, the videos and stuff that we can go back and look at?
We would be able to go back and look at the actual resolutions that approved. What you were provided with was the resolution that we believe is the correct resolution, but Town Attorney Polikoff believes there's a more subsequent, a resolution that was passed that shows a different number. So, we have to look at that, because there probably is a different resolution. We just have to look at that and see.
And the reason I say that is because the.
We should know we agreed to beforehand, right?
The backup that you guys are looking at says that they have to build it after the second CO. And that's different than what I remember, and that's different what the mayor remembers.
Yeah, some are saying three, some are saying four.
Right, so I, I think the first thing that's critical is to confirm on the record
What that is.
when that turn lane would be required to be built. And then, after we determine that, then we can reach, and I'm happy to reach out to their attorney, Stephen Weary, I know him well, and ask him, this is what was Bella, this is you, do you want to bring it back or not? And let's ask them first, you know, whether or not it's a critical difference for them to do it.
I think that's fair.
I'm not comfortable, Mayor, just seeing that language, because I don't think that's it.
Listen, it is what it is, and I don't know that that's what it is, but it's not what we voted on.
And I, I'm certain that if we don't know what it was before, then we certainly don't know what we voted on that.
Reach out to them and ask them, you know?
Doc, did they, why, why is this back here tonight? Did they contact you saying, we feel like you didn't give us what we asked for? Did you catch this on your own, that there was some?
I, I didn't feel that it was correct. They'd called me. He says, it's not the same thing you passed with Terra Ranches. I said, you know what that is? And he believes he knows what it is, and it's the end of the third CO. So, I'm not telling you for sure that that's what it is. I want to hear from Jeff Kadam.
But they initiated it.
But they talked to me, and I said, I believe you're correct, so.
But belief and documentation are two different things, so does he have documentation on it?
I don't know. I really think we're wasting a lot of time here.
We'll have an answer within, before the next meeting. And Russell, if you don't mind just carrying this item over to the next meeting.
Sure.
And then I personally will investigate and get the answer, and then you guys can make your decision.
That's fair enough.
Good. Thank you, Keith.
All right, where are we?
Minutes.
Minutes.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Any public comment or correction on our minutes? Seeing none? Call the question.
Councilmember Hartman?
Yes.
Councilmember Schroder?
Yes.
Councilmember Fisickelli?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Jablonsky?
Yes.
Mayor McKay?
Yes.
Motion to adjourn.
I'll take it.